Good evening and welcome to the Canton Planning Commission for Monday, December 6th. As usual, we always like to begin with saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. All right, let's see who's here. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the role, please?
Sure, Commissioner Atariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Egan.
Hold on, hold on. Where are you, where are you calling?
Yeah, Kent, Wayne County, Canton, Michigan.
Excellent. Commissioner Eganberger does not appear to be here. Commissioner Engel?
Here, Canton Township, Wayne County, Michigan.
Commissioner Foster?
Here from Canton Towny, Canton Township, Wayne County, Michigan.
You're Canton Towny?
She's a townie.
Commissioner Okon?
I am here from Canton Township in Wayne County.
Awesome. Commissioner Singh?
Here, Canton Township, Wayne County.
Commissioner Weber?
Present Canton Township, Wayne County, Michigan.
Commissioner Zubor here, Canton Township, Michigan, and Chairman Green.
Here, Canton Township, Wayne County, Michigan. All right, thank you for that. And also, we have our community planner, Patrick Sloan, and our new senior planner, Aaron Schulto. Welcome to you all and welcome to all that's in the audience, you know, zooming with us today and who will soon watch the recording of this. We have a very heavy agenda item tonight, or agenda of items, but before we get to that, we do have, oh, we don't have minutes, do we? From the last, from the last meeting, okay, all right, I thought we did. Okay, so we have an agenda tonight of six items. Five of them are public hearings, and I would like to just say this real quickly. Those public hearings are very important to the process that we go through as a recommending body in the township, but please note, if you have emailed the planning staff on any of these projects, we have heard you. We all get those emails. So please do not volunteer to speak unless you have new issues and have not heard them addressed already, so that we can cut down on the redundancy and move along, i.e., more of the same is not more impactful. So thank you for your cooperation on that. All right, so as I said, we have some public hearings. The very first one is the Greenland, and I guess it's pronounced Sage, where we're considering a minor PDD for property which is located on the southwest corner of Cherry Hill Road and Denton Road in Cherry Hill Village. The proposed use is a grocery store and bakery. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Sure, thank you. The proposal for the Greenland and Sage Plan Development District is to build a grocery store and bakery on a 1.59 acre parcel located at the southwest corner of Cherry Hill Road and Denton Road. The building is proposed to be just over 19,000 square feet. There are two entrances proposed, one entrance from Market Square Drive to the west and one entrance from Denton Road to the east. Denton Road is a public road under the jurisdiction of Wayne County. Market Square Drive is a private road, and there's an access easement agreement, reciprocal access easement agreement, as well as a maintenance agreement that has been recorded. And that was done so back in 2007, when the site originally was proposed for Rite Aid. There was a Rite Aid proposed that had access similar to this project from Market Square Drive and from Denton Road. Although the Rite Aid building was approved on the subject site, it wasn't constructed and the site has since remained vacant. The project doesn't propose to extend Market Square Drive any further south than the existing road. And the entrance from Denton Road is located on the south side of the site, and it's designed to be as far away from the intersection of Cherry Hill Road as possible. Even with these access points, there's a traffic impact study that is required and has been submitted, and it's been reviewed by our traffic engineering consultant, Wade Trim, which we'll get into in a few minutes. The site is located in the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District, and zoning ordinance states in the guidelines that they're also part of the zoning ordinance itself, those design guidelines. And each plan development within Cherry Hill Village is unique in terms of its pattern book and its schedule of regulations and design. Although the original agreement for Cherry Hill Village had expired in 2014, the standards still apply, and any new project such as this requires its own plan development agreement. Let's see, so with the, the schedule regulations, the proposed front yard setback ranges from eight feet to eight foot seven inches, and the guidelines for Cherry Hill are a maximum setback of 15 feet. So the building is proposed to be located within the allowable front yard setback, and the purpose is to have the buildings closer to the road and have the parking to the side of the rear yards to allow better streetscape and more pedestrian accessibility. The side and rear yard setbacks, the design guidelines allow for side yard setbacks of zero to 10 feet. The proposed building is just over 84 feet from the west lot line and just over 153 feet from the south lot line. So the building is situated to be far from the adjacent residential areas, and between those, the building in those areas is the parking lot. The open space is less than the 25% required in the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District. There's, there wasn't dedicated open space on the previously approved Rite Aid plan, because that required open space was accounted for elsewhere in the village. However, because the original agreement expired in 2014, the minimum open space requirement applies to individual sites on a site-by-site basis. And so the open space modification would be requested as part of the plan development to not have the required 25%. As stated previously, the applicants have submitted a traffic impact study, and it's been reviewed by Wade Trim, which is the contracted traffic engineering consultant with Canton Township. And the traffic impact study notes some future deficiencies under the build conditions, which are northbound on Denton Road, in the through right at Cherry Hill Road during the AM peak hour. The southbound on Denton Road left at Cherry Hill Road during the AM and PM peak hour. And the westbound on Cherry Hill Road left at Denton Road during the AM and PM peak hours. And many of these are under existing conditions, and those were conditions that were in existence in 2018, which is where the original traffic data was used. And our traffic engineering consultant has noted that using the older data, in some cases, we've seen as a township, we've used the older data, that's the pre-COVID data in order to try to project forward if the number of trips come back to pre-COVID levels. We don't know if they will, but that's something where there's more modeling now than there has been ever, just because to look for traffic counts now, to take traffic counts now, is more challenging now than at any time in my career, probably a lot of the careers of traffic engineers. So there's quite a bit of modeling, there's quite a bit of use of data, even if it's older, some, some data to be used. But nevertheless, our traffic engineering consultant has noted that COVID should be listed in the traffic impact study in terms of a factor. And there were a number of things noted in Wade Trim's letter that should be corrected in the traffic engineering study or the traffic impact study. So skipping ahead to our conclusion, that's one of the major reasons we're recommending postponing action on this application this evening, just because there's a number, there are a number of things that our traffic engineering consultant is looking for to complete the traffic impact study. And he's also asking for the recommendations in the traffic study to determine if the applicant is proposing those. For instance, in the traffic impact study, it recommends a right turn deceleration lane on Denton Road, a left turn passing lane on Denton Road, and a left turn phase at the signalized intersection of Cherry Hill and Denton. So in addition to some of that data, there's enough, there are a number of things that the traffic engineering consultant is looking for. The next item in our letter is for sidewalks. There is a sidewalk network as well as along the frontages of Cherry Hill Road and Denton Road. There will be internal sidewalks proposed to connect the building from the towns at Cherry Hill to the west, Cherry Hill Road to the north, and Denton Road to the east. The landscape plan is designed to comply with the zoning ordinance and the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District. That's more of a site plan related issue that should the project move to site plan review or landscape comments would be more detailed, but the plan is designed to comply with the ordinance with some modifications. The parking and loading section, there are 82 spaces required based on the ordinance standard for grocery stores, and there are 82 spaces proposed. There are also six on-street spaces on the south side of Cherry Hill Road in front of the building that could also be used. And then there are three car corrals in the parking lot. There's a loading area that is south of the building, and it's the south side of the building far on the east side, which would be closer to Denton. So it's designed to be away from some of those residential areas, and that's also where the proposed trash compactor is located on the south side of the building towards the east side. The lighting will be addressed in more detail at the time of site plan review. The light fixtures would have to be replaced with the fixtures seen in Cherry Hill Village, and the posts would have to be 10 feet high. Going ahead to the building design, the building design meets many of the standards of the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District, including being two stories, having rectangular form, and having the materials that we require in the zoning ordinance. Similar to the Rite Aid building, which was also a large single-use building, it doesn't have the recommended full width glass on the ground floor and the three windows topped by an upper cornice or parapet on the upper floor, which is seen closer to the corner at Ridge and Cherry Hill. Also, the, the building is a little more modern compared to some of the traditional buildings in Cherry Hill Village. Doesn't mean that it goes against the standards, but the planning commission does have discretion on the building design, which the planning commission could include modifications based on its review. But the exterior material has at least 50% brick, which is required. With the signage, there's no wall signage, but the, there's no wall signage shown in the plans, but there would eventually be wall signage proposed. There's some wall signage that's illustrated, but it isn't dimensioned. The Cherry Hill Village Overlay District limits wall signs to 2% of the building's ground level facade, so the applicant would have to measure that and determine that accordingly. The applicant is also proposing a ground sign on the south side of the proposed driveway from Denton Road. Ground signs are not permitted in Cherry Hill Village, so this would be a proposed modification to the ordinance. There are some ground signs in Cherry Hill Village for certain uses, and they would either be approved through variances or through the PD agreement where they are asking for modifications. So this would be a proposed modification for a ground sign. If the applicants were to be approved for a ground sign in the plan development agreement, we would recommend that the ground sign meet the underlying zoning district standards of not exceeding six feet in height or 24 square feet in area. The last item, the last two items are stormwater management and the PDD agreement. The stormwater management, the, there are two existing ponds located south of the site in the corners of Cherry Hill, and these ponds are designed to hold regional drainage. The stormwater management is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, which would be required during site plan review if the PD is approved. So although the ponds are designed for regional drainage, Wayne County would have to look at the plan to make sure that the standards are still met. And finally, the PD agreement is consistent with the township's template, and the township attorney has approved the document subject to a few minor modifications. Also, the PDD agreement would have to be revised to include the modifications for the ground sign, the clear vision triangle, and having less than 25% open space. So with that, our recommendation is to postpone action on the plant development district, and that's largely because the traffic impact study and the recommendation would be to have the applicant address the recommendations of the traffic impact study, provide the information requested by Wade Trim, and address the plan revisions noted in our report. Our plan revisions are relatively minor in comparison to the traffic impact study data in Wade Trim's review. So those would be the major items. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Patrick, so your recommendation is to postpone this, which I don't think there's too much objection to doing that, but you also went ahead and went through your narrative. So my question is, can we, can we do two things? Can we go ahead and postpone, but deal with specific detail issues related to the project just for when it comes back? Would that speed things along, or is that something that we just, you know, because we're not at site plan review anyway, is it something that we should just hold off and, and deal with later? What do you think?
I've seen it done both ways, and the planning commission has discretion here, so if you want to discuss the application, go through any of the number of things you can and, and still postpone it after that discussion, especially if there's anything that are non-traffic related that may come up where you'd want the applicant to address prior to coming back to the planning commission, whether that's at plan development review or site plan review. Or the planning commission can have a motion to postpone it anytime, just depending on what your comfort level is.
Okay, so I guess the first question is to the planning commission. Do you want to postpone this? Is this a significant enough issue for you to postpone this? I'm seeing heads nod, at least three, maybe four? Okay, all right, I think that's unanimous, not unanimous, but it's a majority of people. So we are going to postpone this. Yes, go ahead.
I think just the traffic impact study by itself, I think because that's going to be the, I personally think the biggest issue in reviewing and approving this, just reading through the various, the various correspondence we received and just how important it is for this area. I, I think without that piece of information, I think the rest of this is, to me, the rest of this stuff is relatively minor. I think, I think for me, anyway, a big part of whether I approve, decide to approve or disapprove is it was going to be based on that traffic data. And, and the traffic data being from 2018, so much has changed since then, both the way people work and what's developing around this area. I think, I think we need to have current data.
And could I make a motion?
You can make a motion.
I moved to postpone the public hearing for the PDD on parcel number 073-99-0001-706, based on the additional traffic study information required by Wade Trim in its letter of November 30th, 2021. I further moved to reschedule and re-advertise the public hearing for a future planning commission meeting in accordance with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act after the comments from Wade Trim have been addressed by the applicant.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor to postpone the project discussion and vote, and support by Commissioner Atariah to do so. Any further discussion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on, on postponing this?
Sure, Commissioner Atariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Okay. Let's move right along then to the second agenda item, Chipotle. We're considering a PDD amendment for property located on the south side of Michigan Avenue between Belleville Road and Beck Road. The proposed use there is a fast food restaurant with a drive-through. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Sure. You may recall that a few months ago, there was a proposed PDD for a Panda Express in front of Walmart on Michigan Avenue on the south side of Michigan Avenue. And there's two, there are two parking lots in front of Walmart on Michigan Avenue that are relatively underused, but I think they're there just for the sake of meeting some parking requirements. But other than just meeting the parking requirements, the parking spaces there don't do much. So a few months ago, there was a proposal from Panda Express for one of those lots to have a drive-through restaurant, and we anticipate them coming back in the next one to two months. And for the other parking lot, there's a proposal for Chipotle, also a fast food restaurant with a proposed drive-through, a little bit of a different drive-through configuration than what was proposed for Panda. And I, I talk about them in tandem just because they're, they're kind of going in parallel tracks in terms of redevelopment of those parking lots. So the applicant is proposing to split just over an acre of property from the Walmart parcel with the intent of constructing a Chipotle restaurant with a pickup window. The building will be just over 2,400 square feet. The current site consists of just a parking lot and is part of the Walmart PDD that was approved in 2007. The PDD has been amended twice for the Walmart store, so this PDD amendment will be the third amendment. The site is located on the west side of Belleville Road, south side of Michigan Avenue between Belleville and Beck, and it's zone C3. And in the C3 district, fast food restaurants are special land uses. But because there is an active PD here to do the fast food restaurant would require amending the PDD and not going the special land route. For the, for the traffic impact, Chipotle proposes to use three existing access points, one on the south side and two on the east side. Additionally, the existing access on the north side of the west site boundary near Michigan Avenue is proposed to be converted from a two-way to a one-way exit only. The project sponsor has submitted a traffic impact study which states that the operational analysis indicates that the approaches of the study intersections would operate at acceptable levels during both midday and PM peak hours with no proposed improvements. The township's traffic engineering consultant, Wade Trim, has reviewed the traffic impact study and stated that it was prepared according to standard procedures and guidelines required by the county and the township. Wade Trim also stated that, based on the information presented in the study, the new trips added to the network as a result of the development will not cause a capacity problem in the area. However, Wade Trim does recommend removing the right out access point located on the north side of the west boundary due to existing, the existing problem and delay of the driveway and the availability of other access points to accommodate this traffic. Although the west access drive at Michigan Avenue was signalized and functions at a level service C, which is acceptable, Wade Trim's concern is that the proximity of Chipotle's intersection with that drive to Michigan Avenue could cause backups onto Chipotle's site. So in other words, if a couple of northbound vehicles are stacked at the light at the intersection of the western drive in Michigan Avenue, a vehicle trying to exit through the one-way exit in northwest part of the site might not be able to do so unless a vehicle allows them to cut in. So there was that potential that was noted by Wade Trim, and one of our recommended conditions based on that analysis is that that northwest exit-only site drive be removed. For the schedule of regulations and modifications, Chipotle plans to meet the ordinance requirements for setbacks and building height. There are some modifications proposed from the zoning ordinance standards. It looks like there are four. They're relatively minor. One of them is the current PD agreement requires 811 parking spaces, and the proposed number is 760. 760, looking at the parking generation manual that we use, looking at historical aerial photos, which are, I think, 24 different photos going back seven or eight years. We find that the proposed 760 spaces are more than sufficient for the, for the use. So the reduction in parking spaces is recommended by staff. Another, another modification is the width of the interior landscape islands to be eight feet instead of 12. This tends to be more of a site plan related issue, but they're, they have it in their PD agreement. So it's not, usually not something major, especially when dealing with sites that are tighter or sites that are more vehicle oriented, where it's harder sometimes to get 12 feet wide landscape islands. Another modification is the foundation landscaping. There's a minimum depth of 10 feet for foundation landscaping and the built, for buildings that face a public road or a parking lot. There's a minimum depth of 10 feet proposed, except there's a portion on the north side that kind of narrows, and it narrows as a result of mostly the angle of the road and how the building meets the road. This is also something the planning commission could administratively adjust at site plan review, but the applicant has it in the PD agreement. And finally, the other modification is the maximum light intensity. There's a light intensity encroachment on the western lot line, which is where the access drive is. And this is something that's relatively minor, especially when it's commercial, two commercial properties abutting each other, or if there's a common access lane where light is not a detriment. So this is something that we would recommend approval of for that modification. For the, for the parking and loading, I won't go over the number of parking spaces as a whole, but we recommend the, the number and the reduction. Based on the size of the Chipotle restaurant and the number of employees, there are 44 spaces required based on the ordinance standard, and there's 44 spaces proposed, so they meet the standard. The applicant is requesting also a modification of the stacking spaces for a fast food restaurant. The zoning ordinance requires that a fast food restaurant with a drive-through lane must have 10 stacking spaces, and there are seven stacking spaces proposed instead of 10. The reason for this is that the drive-through lane for this Chipotle is for pickup only, and there's no menu ordering board. So what Chipotle is proposing is that that pickup lane be for call-ahead orders only, or whether it's someone orders on a mobile app or DoorDash or something like that, where they just go through and pick it up. I think they have these in other locations, and they call it the Chipotle lane, but they don't have a menu board or anything that allows people to order onsite and stack up. So we would recommend approval of that, provided there's no menu board or onsite ordering in the lane. For the architecture, the elevations include more than 50% of the facade material as brick. The plans must include the exact percentage, but by eyeballing it, it appears to be well over 50%. The height of the proposed building from the grade to the top of the parapet is 21 feet, and the plans illustrate that the top of the parapet will screen the rooftop equipment. Again, this is something that we'll look at during site plan review, but the initial illustrations show that it's screened. There is a proposed sidewalk to connect to Michigan Avenue to the building, and there's also sidewalks throughout the site. And then I'll kind of skip through the other, the comments for landscaping, lighting, signage, and dumpster enclosure. They're all designed to comply with those standards, with the exception of any modifications that are proposed in the PD agreement or any modifications that would be at the planning commission's discretion at the time of site plan review. And the PD agreement has been drafted to meet the township's requirements, and we will defer to the township attorney on any remaining comments. I think the last round of revisions were relatively minor, but this is something that we would recommend the township attorney finalizing before it goes to the board. So with that, our recommendation is approval of the plant development district amendment as provided in the PD agreement and plan documents, including a modification to the number of parking spaces, number of drive-through spaces, minimum foundation landscape depth, minimum parking lot landscape depth, and maximum elimination as stated in the plan documents and PD agreement, subject to four conditions. First, addressing any remaining requirements of the township attorney in the PD agreement. Second, including language in the PD agreement prohibiting a menu board and stating that the drive-through lane is for pickup of previously ordered food. Third, showing compliance with the zoning ordinance on the PD plans for other items noted by township staff. And fourth, removing the right out access point located on the north side of the west boundary. That concludes our report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. One quick question. So because of the fact that this is not actually a special land use situation, do, do we actually have to have a public hearing over it?
Yes, as a PD amendment, amending the PD would require a public hearing.
Okay, got you. All right. All right, was that?
Can you refresh my memory, Patrick?
Can you refresh my memory, Patrick? Where the Panda Express is supposed to be going?
Um sure, um I'm going to uh pull up an aerial photo and then um. We will uh be able to get our bearings here.
Isn't it between this site we're dealing with and uh Panera?
Uh yeah, that's correct.
Okay, all right, that's good. You don't you don't have to uh.
Okay, while we're doing that, let us open a public hearing.
Right in there, okay. Got it.
I didn't get anything. Did you do a um? Oh, there we go. It's coming. Nope.
I just.
Okay, the screen sharing. Okay, I didn't get I didn't get it. That's okay. I I know where it's going. Um okay, so uh we need to open a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right, we got a a motion to open the public hearing on this project by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Zuber, call the vote, please.
Certainly, Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Con.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, awesome. Patrick, is uh is there a project sponsorship representation in the audience tonight?
Uh yes, there are, um. There are some members of the team um that I recognize in the audience, uh two of which have their hand raised, so I'll allow them to talk. Um we have uh Brian Aman and Mitchell Harvey.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh Brian Aman on behalf of uh the applicant, and we have Mitchell Harvey from Stonefield Engineering with us. In attendance is also Heather Hancock from All rig, the developer, uh but we're gonna try to keep this quick. Realize you have a full agenda tonight and and try to make this as as uh the least amount of time consuming as possible. Uh we have heard the report. Patrick's done a great job with it. I we're fine with everything that's mentioned. I will ask Mitchell to address that right in, right out. Drive so he can, as the engineer can address the issue that was requested there. Otherwise, we're fine with everything else. That Patrick mentioned in that in terms of the compliance with the requirements and the conditions.
Okay, well, thank you very much for uh for being with us tonight. Um. Let us go to the audience. Patrick, are are there any other audience hands raised?
Uh can we have Mitchell address the uh question of that right in, right out for you just on behalf of the?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I I thought we would. We would get into that shortly, but that's that's fine. We can do that.
Can you guys? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Uh so like Brian mentioned, mine is Mitchell Harvey with Stonefield Engineering. Um we're the civil engineer on this project. You know, looking at the right egress um out onto that shared access drive, um. You know, we we understand that that it could cause a traffic concern, and in the event that the the intersection is is fully queued. But per the per the the traffic report um that was prepared. You know, it operate it operates as is is a fairly high level of service. I believe it was a level of service C. Um which really anything above F is acceptable. So. You know, i- if the if the planning commission would be open to it, we would love to keep that egress location if possible. Um but if, you know, it's it's really a deal break here, um you know, we'll we'll um we'll we'll go ahead and remove that. So. With that, any other questions uh regarding the site or the site layout? Um I'm happy to to um to address.
Okay, thank you so much for that input. Um I'm sure you'll have some questions on that, but what I'd like to do right now is to see if there's any other audience. Um comments or concerns before we get to the commissioners. Patrick, anyone else out there with their hands raised?
Um I don't see anyone in the audience with their hand raised um that is um asking to speak. And before the public hearing, we did not receive any comments um from anyone emailed.
Okay, all right, fair enough. All right, so do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
All right, we got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Con.
Yes.
Uh Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Okay, so uh what we're we're gonna deal with is any comments or concerns about modifications, the driveways. Uh all of those kinds of things. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Foster.
Um I don't really have any questions. I do support the recommendations of the planning um department, though.
Commissioner O'Con.
Yes, I completely agree. Um I think everything's great. I I do. Uh I agree with the staff, though, eliminating that driveway that's that's uh in the north west side, so um. Other than that, looks great.
Commissioner Engel.
Uh your second here. Yes, you know, I agree that it looks like there's two entrances on the east and one on the south, correct?
Correct.
Right.
So I would, yeah, I would be in favor of eliminating that uh one up in the uh far northwest corner. Other than that, I think it's a great project. Uh thank you.
Commissioner Singh.
Uh no questions.
Commissioner Ocharia.
Uh the project looks great. I too have uh the similar concern about uh. The the traffic choke up over there, so I think eliminating one of one on the east, the north uh northwest side would be a great idea.
I'm sorry, you said eliminating the one on the east?
No, the 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 one on the west. Yes.
Northwest, okay, got you. All right. Commissioners Uber.
I I can't edit. I cannot add anything to anything that anyone's already said, if that makes any sense.
Commissioner Weber.
I I agree with Commissioners Uber. I there's I I'm I'm in favor of the project and the recommendations that that's been made.
I think uh it's pretty much uh now all our positions that that one driveway is probably gonna be a problem. So I that's my recommendation also is to to remove that driveway. Other than that, um I think it looks like it's gonna be a good project for the area. So with that said. So with that said.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. I was beginning to wonder about my lead ins here.
All right, I move to recommend approval of the Plan Development District Amendment for Chipotle and parcel seven one one three two nine nine zero 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 three. Seven zero one has provided the Plan Development Agreement and Plan Documents. Including a modification to the minimum number of parking spaces, minimum number of drive through stacking spaces. Minimum foundation landscape depth, minimum parking lot landscape depth. And maximum illumination as stated in the Plan Documents and PD Agreement, subject to the following. One, addressing any remaining requirements to the Township Attorney in the PD Agreement. Two, including language in the PD Group prohibiting a menu board, and saying that your drive through lane is for pickup of previously ordered food. Three, showing compliance with the zoning warrants on the PD Plans for other items noted by township staff. Four, removing the right out access point located on the north side of the west side boundary.
Support.
Or.
All right, we've got the a motion on the floor by Commissioner Weber and support by commis- I'm gonna give it to Commissioner Foster this time. Um any further discussion on this motion? Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sir, Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Con.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, and this motion then um goes to the trustees as our um recommendation. And uh good luck, folks, on that one.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. Our next agenda item is the Canton Banquet and Convention Center. Uh the consideration here is a special land use for a convention center and banquet facility. Uh this the property is located on the east side of Lots Road between Michigan Avenue and Van Born. Uh this project was originally approved in twenty nineteen, but uh the special land use expired, so we've got to revisit it. Uh Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Sure, thank you. Um for um those planning commissioners that were with us back in twenty nineteen, you uh may recall this project on the east side of Lots Road for. The Canton Banquet and Convention Center, and um a- as you stated, it was approved in twenty nineteen and it expired. Um I think it knows small part due to COVID and a number of applications that either expired or sold at that time. And the applicant is returning and is proposing to develop a banquet and convention center of just over thirty six thousand square feet. On um a site that's just over twelve acres in size on the east side of Lots Road, south of Michigan Avenue. The facility will have several banquet rooms with uh pre-function space, including an outdoor event plaza. The center will also include a second floor with offices and bridal suites. Um Lots Road is an existing road that's paved with direct access to Michigan Avenue. Prior to the uh township board's approval of the special land use. Uh back in twenty nineteen, the planning commission did recommend approval and held a public hearing. Um and um since the special land use expired, uh the only major change to the plans has been. The addition of about four acres on the east side of the site, which is proposed for additional parking. The proposed special land use of a banquet and convention center is a special land use in the light industrial zoning district, which is the district that. This site is in, including the new property that's been added since twenty nineteen. There's an area on the south side of the site that's labeled as potential future development site, uh but there's no specific use for that site. It's just a pad area. Proposed on the plans at this point. Um if the proposed use of that area is a convention center, or if it's a hotel, uh which is also a special land use in the LI district. The applicant would be required to obtain a separate approval at that time of future development. For the schedule regulations, the plans submitted illustrate that the proposed element is designed to comply with the dimensional requirements of the LI zoning district for. The building height, the setbacks, um and the other elements of the of the layout. The building is proposed to be two stories and about forty feet in height. Um for the traffic impact and the access management, um there are two points of access proposed from Lots Road. Um these are shown on the plan and and the township would require two points of access. Sometimes, though, the locations can vary somewhat once the county uh looks at the. Review and determines the best locations for the drives, but there will be two drives required from the road. Uh the traffic impact study um submitted by the applicant um indicates that there is a level of service F during the PM peak hour. At the westbound Michigan have an eastbound Michigan have crossover intersection. Uh which is located about four hundred and seventy five feet east of Lots Road um on Michigan Avenue. So it's quite a ways away from the site itself, but it is nevertheless monitored in the traffic impact study just to look at the overall. Uh adjacent and regional traffic conditions. Um this level service F at that particular intersection during the PM peak hour. Um is projected under a no build condition, so it's something that's existing and and going to continue in its condition. Um the traffic study uh concluded that the level of service. Um values for the build condition were largely unchanged from the no build condition due to the off peak traffic use of the subject site. Uh in other words, the proposed development of the banquet facility um is expected to hold um high capacity events on typical weekends. Uh where the traffic volumes on Michigan Avenue are notably lower than during the weekday. So that issue that arises from that PM peak hour. Uh which is the rush hour during the weekday, uh those would not really be high traffic events for the banquet facility. The banquet facility. Its peaks would be on the weekend where there's more capacity in the road and there's not those local service issues. Um also, the uh proposed use of a banquet facility would be less impactful. On that crossover than if it were a permitted use in the industrial district with a daytime shift. Uh for example, if they were to do a manufacturing facility at the site, which is permitted in light industrial. Um and if if it was a permitted use, then it would might be a use that we would have to allow regardless of um the traffic study. And so the proposed use would be less impactful than many other uses in the LI district that are permitted. Um so as a result, uh the Township Engineering Division um did not recommend sending this out for a wage from consult review. Uh based on the acceptance of the traffic study that was done and um. The the fact that the use would be an off peak type of use that's added on to the road network. Um back in uh twenty nineteen, um I think the similar conclusion was reached in terms of the traffic study and uh Wade Trim didn't look at it at that time. Um and so once we uh get to the point of the meeting of discussing with the applicant, I believe the uh applicant has his engineer in the audience. Uh next for the sidewalks, there is an internal sidewalk. Uh there are there's proposed to be internal sidewalks throughout the site going from Lots Road to the building, as well as throughout the site itself. Including between the parking lots and the building. There's also proposed to be um. A sidewalk connecting the existing termination on the south side of the site. Or on the north side of the site, sorry. On the east side of Lots Road, there's a sidewalk that terminates at the north side boundary. And the applicant proposes to extend that sidewalk south along the entire front edge of the site. Uh for landscaping and screening, there's um not a landscape plan required at the time of special land use review. But there's a conceptual plan that's proposed, but it doesn't have details like trees and shrubs and cows and things like that. Uh but landscaping will be a requirement of site plan review. Uh for the parking, the parking calculations are proposed to comply with the zoning ordinance for assembly halls. Which requires one space per two persons based on the occupancy of the building plus one per employee. Based on the applicant's calculations, there are seven hundred and two spaces required, and there are also seven hundred and two proposed. Uh the building occupancy will be confirmed by the fire marshal during site plan review. Um also, at the time of site plan review, the planning commission is able to modify the parking requirements, both up or down. Um without the need for a variance. So if the special land use is approved and at the time of site plan review. They're looking at specific parking areas, and if there's opportunities where maybe they need fewer parking spaces and. Um or they wanna land bank some parking spaces and not to help them at this point, um that's a good time to have that discussion when they start to find. Um for the loading, there's a loading zone located on the um on the south side of the building, um which is a side yard which meets the ordinance. Uh for the lighting, the zoning ordinance requires one light structure installed on each side of each entrance or exit drive at the roads. Um although there's not a lighting plan included at this time, it will be required at site plan review. So that was the. Major item with the lighting that has to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. For the dumpster enclosure, the dumpster enclosure is shown southeast of the proposed building. Uh although the details aren't provided, they'll have to be provided at the time of site plan review, uh but the location is um compliant with the zoning ordinance. For the architecture, um section twenty six point zero six of the ordinance requires a minimum of fifty percent face brick on all commercial buildings. Um however, section twenty six point zero six footnote H allows the planning commission to modify the standard. Um to allow either less brick or different materials um for different types of buildings, not just commercial buildings. Um although the architectural rendering on sheet C five does not illustrate compliance with the brick requirements of the ordinance. Um the actual facade of materials can be addressed at site plan review, so a decision on that can be deferred at that time. Um the signage will be something that would be reviewed at site plan review and is subject to review by the building division. And for the stormwater management, there's a detention pond shown on the east side of the site. And um a review of the stormwater management is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, so um. The plan has been designed by an engineer, although the stormwater basin probably hasn't been fully engineered, uh but they designed it knowing. Uh what the standards are, uh but the stormwater will be evaluated in more detail by Wayne County at the point of site plan review. Uh for the special land use review standards that are in section twenty seven point zero three C. Uh we've analyzed the standards and uh we found that the standards are met for this particular uh use on this site. And I won't go through each and every one of the standards, but we've gone through section twenty seven point zero three C and we've evaluated those standards. Additionally, the applicant has submitted a narrative that addresses the standards as well from their point of view. So with that, our recommendation is approval of the special land use for a banquet and convention center on the site as illustrated on the special land use plan for the recent stated in our analysis, subject to the items noted in this review being addressed or corrected at the time of site plan review. That concludes our report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsorship representative there?
Yes. Looking to the audience here.
Mr. Chairman, I move to open the public hearing.
Awesome. Support. All right, we've got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Angle. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote on opening the public hearing?
Sure, Commissioner Taria.
Yes.
Commissioner Angle.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Okay, do we have a representative?
Yes, we have Bill Knighton from Manikin Smith in the audience. I'll allow Mr. Knighton to speak. He's a representative of the applicant.
Awesome, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for having us. This is Bill Knighton from the Manic Smith Group, as Patrick mentioned. We're the engineers and planners on the project. I'm here representing Mr. Bill Baines, the owner of the project and a Canton resident. And he's excited to get this project underway. And we're here to answer any questions you may have for us.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much for that. Let us go to the audience. Patrick, are there any comments from the audience per se?
I do, I don't see any hands raised in the audience, and we did not receive any emails or written correspondence for this public hearing.
All right, then let's entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All right, got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Zuber, call the vote, please.
Sure, Commissioner Taria.
Yes.
Commissioner Angle.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, and so now let us talk to the commission. Commissioner Angle, any thoughts, comments, concerns on this project?
No, sir, I'm all set. Thank you.
Commissioner Zuber?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Acharia.
It's a great project, but the only concern I have is about, I want to know a little bit more about the tree preservation because I see a lot of green in that area. So if, I don't know whether it's the right time or we wait for a later date, but that's just one concern that I have.
Well, say that again, Commissioner.
The tree preservation part of it, it's a green area. So I just wanted to know from Patrick or maybe the project sponsor whether they have taken adequate measures for tree preservation.
Okay. Any comments on that, Patrick?
Yeah, I can, I can discuss that a little bit. So we don't have a landscape plan, a formal landscape plan that we've evaluated. And with our tree preservation standards and ordinance in jeopardy in terms of some of the, some of the lawsuits that have gone through in a recent lawsuit where we're not able to fully apply the standards. A lot of, a lot of the outcome of that is, is up in the air. And one of the things, though, that we are able to do when the time comes for site plan review is a tree removal permit is still required and we can still do an individual evaluation of every site. So that does mean that at the time of site plan review, we can have a tree inventory of the site. We can evaluate the impact on the proposed removal. And we can work with the applicant on the landscape plan to see what, what that evaluation yields. And that may involve the township having a landscape architect or an arborist review the plans that come in and provide us advice on that evaluation in terms of what would be appropriate in terms of mitigating the loss of those trees. But we're, we're still kind of in the, in the early stages of of working through our land, our tree preservation standards, the ones that, that do remain as, as we go along with, with the, the legal process with our ordinance there. But there'll be more to come on that. Thank you, thank you, Patrick.
Okay, all right. Okay, Commissioner Okon, did you have any thoughts or comments?
This is a great start. I love it. It's, it's a, it's a good use for over there. I'm excited. Looks good and I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Foster.
The only question I have is in regards to the parking. I do remember when this came before the township board a few years ago, but it did, did it have, have this number of parking spaces then? Or were parking spots added to reach the seven oh two parking spaces?
There, there were spaces added. I think it, I don't remember how many spaces it had, but I believe that it was fewer spaces.
Wasn't there some expansion space as well? Like for the building too? It wasn't going to be as big?
There may have been some phasing on that 2019 plan in terms of being able to add on in the future.
Patrick?
Yes, Knighton has a comment?
Yeah, hi. Yeah, the size of the building actually has been reduced and the additional property primarily was bought so the owner could provide at-grade detention as opposed to a below-ground detention area. And that, and then the ability for a future development pad. So the number of spaces is very similar to the initial approved plan.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Weber?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Singh?
No questions. It's a great project. Excited for it.
Mr. Knighton, you did, you said that the, the building did shrink a little bit, but in our narrative here, it says it's thirty-six thousand three hundred and forty square feet. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, how does that compare with local competing banquet facilities like Laurel Manor and Burton Manor in Livonia? Is that, I don't know how large those are.
Yeah, similar in size to Burton Manor.
Okay.
Comparable, very comparable.
Okay, awesome.
The owner did, the owner did do a very detailed market study for this property, as he should, and it came out very positive for this size of facility.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm glad that somebody was looking at this type of use in Canton. It's been a long overdue. The summit that we have is not large enough, you know, to compete with those other facilities. And I thought, okay, with the population growing as large as it is, we should have something like this. So I just, I was just curious how that compared to those manners that were, had been here a long time and have, you know, used a lot of their facilities. But Patrick, the, the pavement, I don't know how this happened, but the pavement on Lots Road going south of Michigan Avenue only goes a certain distance. Does this project go to the, at that point of the paved part of Lots Road? Or will there be more paving required?
This appears to all be along the paved front edge of Lots Road. Looking at most recent aerial photos, I see what you mean. It appears to be paved all the way to the south boundary of the site. So it, it has all of it paved front edge currently.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Other than that, I, you know, I like, I like the way the building looks. Although I could, I could make a point that, you know, that I always make on our projects that the back of the building, the rear of the building could use more architectural enhancement, let's say. But being that it's in a, you know, more industrial type of situation with Canton, I'm going to forego that. The front of the building, the sides of the building look very, very nice. It looks like it's very architecturally well-done. And since I haven't heard anything negative from our local architect, Commissioner Zuber, I'm going to assume that she's satisfied with the way it looks also.
I only saw a drawing of the front of the building, so.
So I thought, wasn't there a side view also?
No, there was not.
No.
Oh, okay.
There was not.
Only a front facade is required for the cemental. But the owner plans on having all sides attractive because of it being a banquet center and he wants it to be a nice facility.
Patrick, should, should this be approved? Which I'm thinking that it's going to be. Should this part of it be approved? Will we see more on the site plan review?
Definitely. A site plan review includes or requires many more details, including profile elevations of all sides of the building and material calculations as well. The, the applicant has material calculations for, for that front side that are included, but we would have all sides for the site application.
Okay, all right. And then for clarification about the, the tree situation, because looking at the satellite view of this, it looks like a ton of trees are going to have to be removed for this. So are you saying that right now, because of litigation and other things going on, that our normal, what is it, three hundred dollar per tree is kind of suspended? That that consideration is, is there that we're just kind of like turning our head the other way?
Well, we're definitely, definitely not doing that. The, doing the, the charge per tree and replacement schedule that's called for in the ordinance, that's, that's something that I don't think that we'll be able to apply the way that we've been applying it for, for several years. So we're, we're still working through how we are working with the ordinance going forward. And there'll be more to come on that. But they, they will be required at site plan review to have a tree inventory. So they'll have to inventory the trees there. So we'll know the number of the sizes, the species, the conditions. And we'll, we'll look at the condition of the area, the quality of the trees. And, and we'll, we'll go through the, the evaluation that we're able to. And we'll probably work with the township attorney on this as we'll work with the township, with the township attorney and many other tree removal applications just because everyone is a little bit different and we want to make sure that we're still properly evaluating it within the, within the legal requirements that we can. So as we, as we go through the site plan process, we'll have a lot more information in terms of the things that we can do and the things that we can't do specific to each application when we individually evaluate them.
I got you. Okay. All right, well, that's, that's all that I have, those, those issues. Anyone else have anything?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the special, special land use for a banquet and convention center use on parcel seven one dash one four one dash nine nine dash zero zero two seven dash seven one six as illustrated on the special use plans as the request meets the special use, special land use criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance, subject to specific design criteria being addressed or corrected at the time of site plan review.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioners Zuber and support by Commissioner Acharia. Any further discussion? Commissioners Zuber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Taria.
Yes.
Commissioner Angle.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, okay, that recommendation goes forward. Our next item on the agenda tonight is mini storage depot, where we're considering a special, special land use here for a mini warehouse. This property is located the southeast corner of Research Drive and Michigan Avenue. I guess that would be across from Target and Kohl's and that shopping center there, located between Beck Road and Belleville Road. Patrick, could you tell us more about this?
Thank you, and that's correct. It'll be just south where the Target and Kohl's are on Michigan Avenue. The applicant proposes to construct a mini warehouse establishment that will consist of three buildings at forty-nine eighty-five Research Drive, which is a vacant property. Specifically, this one is at the corner of Research Drive and Michigan Avenue at that southeast corner. And the subject site is owned LI Light Industrial and mini warehouse establishments are special land uses in the LI zoning district. The applicant is in the process of preparing an application for site plan review. So the special land use plans currently include more details than are typically required on a special land use plan. So with, with the details, they'll have a little bit more specific comment in our review letter, but nevertheless, things that can be addressed during the site plan review process should the special land use be approved. The mini warehouse establishment, it is a special land use and there are specific requirements in section six point zero two M of the zoning ordinance. The site meets the middle lot area for a mini warehouse of three acres. All storage is proposed to be located within a building. And the buildings are proposed to be constructed of the materials stated by section twenty-six point zero six of the zoning ordinance. And any of the storage items that would be proposed to be stored would be inside any of the three buildings, so there wouldn't be any outdoor storage. The plans submitted illustrate that the proposed development is designed to comply with the dimensional requirements of the district for the lot width, the max building height, the setbacks for the front side and rear yard. The setback along Michigan Avenue is measured at fifty feet due to a recorded fifty-foot landscape buffer easement. Otherwise, the front yard setback is forty feet. So we'll get a little bit more of a front yard setback from Michigan Avenue. There is one point of access proposed to the site, which is from Research Drive. There are no curb cuts proposed from Michigan Avenue directly. And that was one of the purposes of Research Drive is that that industrial park, all the access points will be from Research Drive, so there wouldn't be any additional curb cuts on the Michigan Avenue. The plans show parking calculations for mini warehouse establishments. And based on the number of units, there are twenty-three spaces required. The submitted plans include nine parking spaces, including one van accessible barrier-free space. So there's many fewer spaces than are required by the ordinance. And the planning commission can modify the parking space requirements administratively at the time of site plan review. The ordinance allows for the planning commission to have that discretion. But the applicant does note that based on their history of owning and operating mini warehouse establishments, the traffic counts are very low for this type of land use. And generally, when someone goes to the mini warehouse, they're going to park alongside the building where it's a loading and unloading area. And there's not really a large peak time that we see in other types of uses. The loading spaces for mini warehouses are addressed in section six point zero two of the ordinance for mini warehouses specifically for those uses, and those standards for the loading are met. For the architecture, the applicant has provided elevations with the percentage of materials to be used outside of the building. Our only recommendation there, now that we have all four elevations submitted, is that for the main building, we recommend having masonry on the ends of the rear elevations just to wrap the corners with the masonry and make for a little bit better transition rather than having the transition at the corner itself. But that's a little bit more of a site plan comment. The applicant for the landscaping, screening and tree preservation, there's been some details for landscaping, but landscape plan will be required at site plan review. So we don't have a full landscape plan at this point. For sidewalks, there are currently no sidewalks along Michigan Avenue or Research Drive, but there is sidewalk proposal on the front edge of Michigan Avenue. Research Drive doesn't have sidewalks for any of the uses and it wasn't proposed to have them because it's an industrial park. But the proposed sidewalk along- Uh, but the proposed sidewalk along Michigan Avenue will fill a gap. Um, for the lighting signage and dumpster enclosure, those are items that will be addressed at site plan review and more details are required. Um, there's currently not a photometric plan, but the applicant has been uh, made aware of the illumination requirements. Um, the signage will be required uh, to be reviewed at site plan review. Um, there are a couple sign comments that we did have in terms of the max sign height and area. And uh, the height of the sign and how it's measured that we've noted in our report to the applicant, and these will be items that we uh, would require more detail added site plan review. Um, the dumpster enclosure is on the east side of the property in the rear yard, and it will be for staff access only. And it includes um, the standards in section two point one four of the zoning ordinance. There are a few areas where modifications are required for some ballards, but again, these are more site plan details. Um, finally, we've reviewed the special land use in accordance with uh, the special land use review standards in section twenty seven. Point zero three C of the ordinance, and we recommend that uh, the findings be adopted, that the special land use meets all of these criteria. Additionally, the applicant has submitted a narrative with the application that addresses the criteria from their point of view. And uh, we find that the criteria in section twenty seven point zero three C have been addressed. Um, so with that, our recommendation is approval of the special land use for a mini warehouse establishment on the parcel. As illustrated on the special land use plan for the reasons stated in the analysis, subject to the items noted in the review being addressed. And are corrected at the time of site plan review. Uh, that concludes our report and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Uh, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Alright, we got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioners Uber and support by Commissioner Singh. Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Atariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Excuse me, Commissioner Ocon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, Patrick, do we have a pro- project representative uh, in the audience today?
Uh, yes, um, there are some representatives from the applicant. Uh, we have one Clint Patterson with his hand raised, so. Uh, Mr. Patterson, uh, you're allowed to talk if you wanna unmute yourself.
Fantastic, thank you folks for having us.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, my name's Clint Patterson with Sterling Development. Um, we're a development group um, based in the Midwest. And um, our engineer is um, Andy Wozniak, um, local to that area. Um, and we're happy to answer any questions. We look forward to investing in your community.
Awesome, thank you for being here tonight. Alright, Patrick, uh, are there any comments from the audience? Anybody with a hand raised?
I don't see anyone in the audience with a hand raised, and uh, we haven't received any uh, any comments in writing or email on this application.
Mister Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Sucker. Alright, we've got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioners Uber and support by Commissioner Weber. Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Atariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, it is eight twenty one and the public hearing for this is closed. We'll go right to the commission, we're gonna start with Commissioner Engel.
Um, I'm all set, looking forward to the project, thank you.
And Commissioner Ocon.
I'm all set, thank you.
Commissioners Uber.
I have to agree with Patrick's comment about wrapping the brick around the corners. I think that would look a lot nicer than just stopping it right at the corner. Um, I also think that the uh, I'm gonna scoop you on your comment Greg about the back elevation. Um, it is rather plain looking. I get that it looks out at the um, at the storage facilities behind. Um, but it 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 could be a little nicer looking. Um, so I would just encourage the sponsor to think about that a little bit. Um, but that's that's my feedback.
What would, what the, what elements would you like to see incorporated on that rear side? And I have to, I have to admit, when, I have, I have to apologize, I I was thinking about this on the other project. And that's.
Wondered if you had a dream about it or something.
Cause I went back and it's like, wait a minute, there aren't any elevations on that that other project. What was I looking at? And yeah, are you uh, are you talking about incorporating any of the brick or anything?
Yeah, yeah, I would like to see, um, I I'm trying to figure out what the panels uh.
And and I can speak if I, if everybody can still hear me.
Sure, absolutely.
We we are happy, so a a lot of times on that backside, there are uh, a again, it's it's loading. It's um, it's not necessarily that stuff that can be seen, especially with how that's set up. Um, and so that that's why we leave it metal. Um, in some cases, we we do do the brick wainscoting like a four or five foot uh, tall, um, which again. Um, it it's a common thing that that we do do, so I'm happy to add that if if that's something you guys would uh, would wanna see. Um, again, from a, from somebody parking next to it or anything like that, it saves us from having to replace metal panel anyway. Because it kind of creates that solid barrier. Um, so again, I'm happy to do that if that's the direction everybody feels good about.
May I make a suggestion, and I don't know if our resident architect would concur with this. And looking at the lineup of the elevations that we see here, um, you've got um, an element of the lower. Cut of brick, um, you know, both in the middle of the two side elevations and on the front. It it, you know, how you see how that goes, I guess you'd call it the wainscoting, right?
Yep.
So that height, um, and it looks like if the scale is the same, it 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 kind of goes to the top of the doors on the backside. Or a little bit higher than the doors. Um, if that same height could be carried through the back of that. I think that changes the appearance. Would you, would you agree, Commissioners Uber?
Yes.
If you just.
I was gonna suggest that they just take it around to that same one story height around the back.
Is that, is that a possibility, uh, Mr. Patterson?
Sure, I'm happy to look into that. Normally, it's in that four to five foot uh, like wainscoting uh, just because then you're solid above that. Um, but again, I'm I'm happy to have our um, architect look at that, and if it can be pulled off, uh, which I assume it can, uh, then then we're happy to do that. If that's a suggestion.
That would be awesome. That would be awesome. Um, let's see, who didn't I call on?
And just, oh well, and sorry, just I'll I'll make one comment, cause that back rear elevation, tho- those are just access points up. All of the HVAC stuff is on the ground, um, and will be properly screened by landscaping and such. I know that can, those are, I think those are uh, el- either elevator shafts or uh, whatever that have to raise above. But would be hidden behind the parapet on the front side. Um, but just so you know, there is no rooftop mechanicals or anything like that. Because what people are after is dry and and safe, so uh, normally when you put those up top, there's problems down the road.
The uh, the the vertical elements that we do see there, are those um, are those downspouts?
Yes.
Okay, alright, you know, um, the fact that those are a different color is fine, because it breaks up. Uh, a long run of the same, same old, same old.
That's why we try to do that.
Yeah, okay. Alright, thank you for for that and thank you for working with us on that. I think that uh, make those additions. Um, that would be, that would be fantastic. Commissioners Singh, did I call on you?
Yes, sir. Um, the only question besides all the other uh, which were asked was the parking. Parking is only nine spots as I see it, especially next to a three story um, storage unit. So I think uh, we can discuss that at the time of um, another review, but that would be my concern.
A- and uh, Commissioner Singh, I'll I'll add to that. Um, the ordinance calls for um, a loading zone um, throughout that whole property. So where we normally are just at a thirty foot drive aisle, which is pretty generous in most cases anyway. Um, there is an additional ten foot um, on either side. Um, and and as Mr. Sloan alluded to, most people are pulling up parking and from an intensity standpoint on this use. You, you, when this is fully occupied and fully stabilized. You, uh, our calculations show that you will see about thirty six people here a week with the uh, with the uh, the units. The amount of units that we have, so that's that's one of those things, that this isn't something you're seeing McDonald's or uh, some of the other fast foods that we heard of tonight. Where there's gonna be stacking problems, you you may see two, three, four people here a day at most. Um, and so that's, that's where I'd like to kind of direct that from from a parking standpoint. Um, so I'll leave it at that for right now, but I just did wanna share that.
Okay, alright, thank you, thank you for adding that. Commissioner Foster, did I call on you?
No, you didn't, but I don't have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Ocon.
Nope, still good.
Still good, and Commissioner Engel, did we get your feedback?
All set, thanks Greg.
And Commissioners Uber, any further? You're good?
I'm good, thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Weber, did I get you?
No, you didn't. Um.
Alright.
The only question I have is, I guess this is probably more directed to Patrick and I'm assuming Wayne County has to deal with this. Given how much paved surface we're adding here, is it, is, what's the impact on this, on the stormwater basin to the south? Is that, is the capacity adequate and that's really?
Believe it was designed for um, all of Research Drive to access that same pond. And uh, that'll also be something again where uh, they'll go to Wayne County for their, their permit. For stormwater in Wayne County, we have to evaluate it to make sure that it's it's ordinance standards are still met.
Yeah, I'm, I'm satisfied, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Atariah, did I call on you?
Yes, I'm good.
You're good, okay, and I am good as well. Um, the only concerns I had, uh, we've already addressed. Um, I think it's gonna be a good project.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Mister Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the special land use for a mini warehouse establishment. Use on parcel number one three one dash zero two dash zero zero one five dash zero zero zero. As the request meets the special land use criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided. Subject to specific design criteria noted in the staff report to be addressed and or corrected at the time of the site plan review.
Sucker.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioners Uber and support by Commissioner Weber. Any further discussion? Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote, please?
Sure, Commissioner Atariah.
So, yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes, and Chairman Green.
And so yes, and so our recommendation moves forward. Our next agenda. Thank you for being with us today. We appreciate your your input and um, your contribution. Our next agenda item tonight is the Canton Business Center, where we're considering a special land use for an automobile service station uses. On property which is located north side of Coppernick Road between Hagerty Road and Lily Road. Mister Sloan, could you give us more detail?
Sure, thank you. The purpose of this application is to allow for certain tenants of the industrial park. On Coppernick Road, um, and it's at the far west end of Coppernick. Um, it's uh, east of Lily, and the address ranges are forty two thousand to forty two thousand and forty. And um, the proposal is for uh, some of the tenants there to allow to, to install aftermarket parts and equipment. Onto vehicles, uh, such as lights and uh, breath alcohol interlocking devices. Um, the installation of aftermarket parts and equipment is within the definition of automobile service station in the zoning ordinance. Which is a special land use in the LI Light Industrial Zoning District. Most of the units and buildings B through E in the industrial park have a bay door uh, that could allow for indoor minor service. Um, the reason that uh, this application has uh, come up is that. Um, there was a certificate of zoning compliance application for um, a user and their. Their business is the installation of breath alcohol interlocking devices, which is basically, someone will bring their car there, they they hook up the device. Over the course of maybe an hour or two, and then um, there are, there are certified installer. Um, with with the state to make that type of repair, um, which is relatively minor, there's no disassembly of the vehicle or the. Offsite impacts that we can tell, but nevertheless, a use like that is classified as auto repair. And within the definition of an automobile service station, even though it's not typically what we would think of as that type of use. So uh, we advise the applicant that if they wanted to pursue that use uh, for that particular unit. As well as any other types of uses where they install aftermarket parts like uh, lights or. Um, certain customization of vehicles, they would have to apply for the special land use and obtain that. Um, specifically, the zoning ordinance defines automobile service station as uh, quote. A place used for the sale of minor accessories such as tires, batteries, mufflers, brakes, shock absorbers, window glass. Uh, quick oil change and lubrication and the servicing of and minor repair of automobiles, end quote. Uh, because that's a very broad definition, and the applicant is proposing only minor types of service. Uh, we recommend the following conditions uh, to ensure that no auto repair activities are conducted. And uh, basically, there's there's six of them that we recommend. Uh, first is that all service installations and or removals be conducted indoors with all overhead doors closed. The second, no painting, undercoating or similar repair or treatment service. Uh, third, no oil change, coolant change, transmission fluid change or similar fluid service. Uh, fourth, no engine transmission collision, frame or fender straightening or similar vehicle repairs or service. Uh, fifth, no installation maintenance or repair of tires, brakes, shocks, mufflers, exhaust or similar equipment. And sixth, no parking of any unlicensed store inoperable vehicles allowed on the site. Uh, based on the scheduled regulations for the LI district as well as the vehicle repair standards. Um, the plans currently comply with the dimensional requirements for the building height, the front yard setback of forty feet in the rear. It's setback of twenty feet in the LI district. Um, there are some existing side yard setback encroachments for buildings B and D. Um, as the minimum side yard setback of fifteen feet um, on one side and forty feet total on the other are required. Uh, for automobile service stations, they have to have a minimum front yard setback of eighty five feet. And a minimum side yard setback and rear yard setback of thirty feet, so those standards are a little bit higher when we apply the specific use standards in the district. So for the auto repair service, um, any unit that would have an auto repair use would have to be subject to those standards if they wanna have that use. As a result, the following areas are located within the setback and would be ineligible to contain an automobile service station use if the special land use is approved. Uh, basically, all of building A, that's the main building on the south side of the lot, all of building A would virtually be unusable for um, automobile service. Um, the units three oh five and three oh six of building E, which are located on the south end. Uh, unit four ten of building D, which is located on the southwest end. And unit two ten of building B, which is located on the southeast end, so we've got some end units on some of those other buildings where. Uh, the use would be ineligible should it be approved. Uh, for the parking, the site does meet the parking standards of the ordinance. Uh, there are no site changes proposed, no changes to the buildings, no changes to the parking uh, lot, no changes to anything else. It's just allowing for a use within existing buildings that are eligible. Um, the um, recommended condition is that not more than one vehicle is serviced. Um, to be parked outside of a building at any one time, just to make sure that those parking standards are met. And that there isn't an influx of vehicles that are just parked there over time waiting to be serviced. Uh, based on the special land use review standards of section twenty seven point zero three C of the zoning ordinance. Um, we find that the standards are met for the proposed use, provided that the conditions um, that are recommended by staff are adopted. Also, the applicant has provided a narrative with the application that addresses those standards. Um, so, um, the staff's recommendation is. So the staff's recommendation is approval of the special land use for automobile service station uses on the subject parcel for the reasons stated in the above analysis. Subject to the conditions noted in our staff report with already the allowable locations and use restrictions. And again, we have the use restrictions that are located in the staff report. And we also have others in terms of prohibiting the use in, to the units that are within the setbacks, not having more than one vehicle serviced parked outside the building at any one time. That all service installations or removals are conducted indoors with all overhead doors closed and that there's no parking of any unlicensed or inoperable vehicles allowed on the site. So that concludes our staff report and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Patrick. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Everyone supported me.
Oh, so much cooperation. All right, we've got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioners Uber and support by Commissioner Foster. Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote, please?
Sure, Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel. Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, stay with us.
I think you forgot me, Don.
Oh, yes. Commissioner Foster.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm so sorry. I'm getting, I thought I, I thought I had it all memorized by now, but I don't. I have to look at my list.
I guess it's getting late.
It's getting late.
Patrick, do we have a project representative in the audience?
Um, yes, we have a representative who's the applicant, Charlie Davis. I, I hope I pronounced his name correctly. Charlie, I'm going to allow you permission to talk. Charlie doesn't have his hand raised, but allow him to talk anyway, just in case he has any comments or if there's any questions from the commissioners. So Charlie, you can go ahead and speak if you'd like.
Hello, everyone. Hello. Um, my name's Charlie. I'm one of the owners of the property. I really don't have anything. Patrick said everything that I needed to say. And if you guys have any questions, I'm, I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and cooperating with us. Any further discussion? Any, anyone from the audience with their hand raised, Patrick?
Uh, there's nobody else in the audience with, nobody else with their hand raised and we didn't receive any written comments or emails regarding this application.
All right, we know the next step then.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
We've got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioners Uber and support by Commissioner Weber. Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote, please?
Sure, Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel. Did I say Commissioner Foster? Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. All right, let's just go right to the commission. Commissioner Charia, any current comments, concerns?
No questions and I'm all.
Commissioner Foster.
No questions.
Commissioner Okon.
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Singh.
Uh, no questions.
Commissioner Weber.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioners Uber.
I'm good.
Commissioner Engel.
I'm all set, thank you.
Commissioner Green, I'm all set also.
Mr. Green, could I make a motion, please?
You sure can.
I move to recommend approval of the special land use for automobile, automobile service station uses on said parcels at, said parcel at forty-two hundred to forty-two forty, Coppernick Road as the request meets the special land use criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance, subject to the following conditions. The automobile service station is, use is prohibited in building A and prohibited within any areas of buildings B through E that are within eighty-five feet of the front lot line or thirty feet of a side or rear lot lines. No more than one vehicle being serviced shall be parked outside a building at any time. All service installations and or removals shall be conducted indoors with all overhead doors closed. No parking of unlicensed or inoperable vehicles shall be allowed on site. And the following automobile services are prohibited, painting, undercoating or similar repair or treatment service, oil change, coolant change, transmission fluid uh, transmission fluid change or similar fluid service, engine transmission collision, frame or fender straightening or similar vehicle repairs or service, installation maintenance or repair of tires, brakes, shocks, mufflers, exhaust or similar equipment.
Hello.
The board.
Thank you. We've got a motion on the floor by Commissioners Uber and finally support by Commissioner Singh. Commissioner, any further discussion on that motion? Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes, and Chairman Green.
It's a yes for me. I'm wondering if we're all getting like the sleepy giggles or something. Anyway.
Good thing we didn't have another public hearing.
Yeah. Okay, so that motion carries to the trustees and our next agenda item, believe it or not, is not a public hearing. It is a site plan where we're considering developer instigated revisions to the Wendy's, which property is located on the south side of Ford Road between Hagerty Road and Lily Road. Proposed changes into the building in site. Could you give us specific details, Patrick?
Sure, thank you. The proposal is for Wendy's to make some building renovations to the restaurant. That's, this is the one on the south side of Ford Road, just west of Hagerty Road. And the renovations include interior remodeling, replacing the metal accent bands at the top of the building, replacing the large glass areas at the front of the building on the west and east sides with brick and windows and adding a red evis blade in front of the building. The site changes will include adding landscape infill in the existing areas of building where class is proposed for removal and removal of one parking space south of the building to allow van accessibility for the adjacent barrier free space. There's also new asphalt surfacing proposed in the parking lot. The main reason that this is before the planning commission is the architectural changes. Sometimes there can be minor revisions to previously approved plans that if they're within a certain size, they can be approved by staff, but the zoning ordinance allows for items to be deferred to the planning commission. Given the change of the facade, this is something that we wanted the planning commission to review. And in many similar cases where there's significant facade changes, oftentimes we like to hear the planning commission's comments and recommendations on that. The, the land use has been there for quite a long time. The fast food restaurant and drive-through was originally approved in nineteen eighty and the applicant is proposing to retain the same use and just remodel and the interior and exterior of the building. So the proposed site layout is, it's proposed to be the same on the, on the drawings. Therefore, the footprint of the building won't significantly change and the site will still comply with the required setbacks of the C-three district. The site is also located in the central business district overlay and it's proposed to comply with those requirements as well. For the traffic circulation, the site has one curb cut from Ford Road and it's a one-way circulation throughout the site. There are no changes to the curb cut or the circulation on the site based on the plans. The zoning ordinance does require all sites in the central business district overlay to provide joint access with adjacent properties. And we recommend as a condition of approval that the site include reciprocal access easements to the adjoining sites pursuant to the section of the zoning ordinance and that Wendy's cross-access drives be constructed on its site. We're currently working with the applicant and the adjacent property owners as well as the DDA to coordinate future cross-access. If there is cross-access proposed on the south side of this site, we would recommend eliminating the eleven spaces along the southern property line. The subject site has an excessive number of parking spaces that were originally approved in nineteen eighty. So the loss of eleven spaces or even the loss of four to six spaces if the cross-access drive is in the north part of the site, they won't impact the parking level of, of the site. So a lot of parking spaces could easily be removed and they would still meet the standards of the zoning ordinance without any required modifications to that standard. So there is some, some flexibility there. The major architectural change under, include replacing the metal accent bands at the top of the building and some of the previous ones that we noted in our initial narrative. The building materials comply with section twenty-six point zero-six of the zoning ordinance and the building will continue to include over fifty percent brick. The red evis blade will be a height of seventeen and a half feet high. For reference, the Wendy's on Michigan Avenue between Beck Road and Canton Center Road has a similar red evis blade just behind the facade of the building that's twenty-six feet high. So this blade will be quite a bit lower than the one that's on Michigan Avenue. As we previously stated, the number of parking spaces is currently at fifty-six and will be reduced to fifty-five. The zoning ordinance requires a minimum of twenty-one spaces based on the calculations provided on the plan. So the site is, the site's way overparked and I don't know if that was because the parking standards in nineteen eighty were much higher or if the parking demand for fast food restaurants at that time was much higher than it is today. So there is room on the site for flexibility for the cross-access drives. If we lost spaces due to that, there, there would be a lot of spaces that could be removed and they would still satisfy the requirements of the zoning ordinance. For the landscaping and screening, much of the landscaping on the originally approved site plan in nineteen eighty has since died and the applicant has submitted a landscape plan that meets the requirements for the frontage landscaping and the parking lot landscaping. Although there was no foundation landscaping on the originally approved plan in nineteen eighty, there is new foundation landscaping proposed on the west and east sides of the building. Because this is an existing condition, the foundation standards of the ordinance don't apply. However, the proposed foundation landscaping is an improvement over what's there today, as is the landscape plan as a whole. The ordinance requires that rooftop equipment be screened from adjacent property and public rights away. And as a condition of approval, we recommend the elevations show the existing and proposed mechanical equipment along with the required screening. For the lighting, we recommend as a condition of approval that the site lighting be revised to comply with the standards of the zoning ordinance. Looking at the site, many of the fixtures are non-conforming and are not shielded. So we recommend those light fixtures be adjusted. For the signage, the ordinance requires that whenever there is a site plan review or an application that requires site plan review, that any non-conforming signs be removed. And there's an existing pole sign in the front of the site that would be subject to removal and replacement according to the zoning ordinance standards. Signs are reviewed for compliance with the zoning ordinance by the Building and Inspection Services Division. And the wall sign might be, might need to be lowered so that it's not higher than two feet above the building roof. Also, there's a menu board permitted by the zoning ordinance, but it can't exceed twenty-four square feet. Therefore, the pre-sale board that's shown on the plans must be removed. Going back to the ground sign that's there, there's an existing pole sign and the height and the area exceeds the current standards of the ordinance. So the ordinance would require that that sign be removed and replaced with a conforming ground sign. At the same time that, that we're working with that, MDOT is working on some preliminary and final designs for the upcoming road project for the Boulevard along Ford Road. And some of the design in MDOT will impact some of the existing signs along Ford Road, possibly including the existing Wendy's sign. And one of the things that we would like to do, it's not written in our report, but in talking with the applicants since by township staff is, we would like to put some flexibility in terms of the timing of how that sign in the front is replaced because what we wouldn't want is for a conforming sign to be replaced to pre-place there along with the construction in this application, only to see that it may be removed within a couple of years by MDOT. So I think what we'd like to do is have the flexibility to still institute the ordinance requirement for the sign, but to have some flexibility on the time, on the timing that's mutually agreeable between the township and the applicant to allow for the MDOT design to proceed and then that we can put a deadline, whether it's a date certain or when end on construction begins where we can, we can implement the requirement for replacing the sign once we know MDOT's plans a hundred percent on that. Finally, there's an existing dumpster enclosure in the southwest corner of the site with no changes proposed. And if changes are proposed, then the dumpster enclosure will be required to comply with the standards of the zoning ordinance. So with that, our recommendation is approval of the Wendy's site plan, subject to the following conditions. First, that the applicant record reciprocal access easements to the adjoining sites. Second is eliminating any parking spaces necessary for the reciprocal access points. Third, placing a tree in each landscape island unless the islands are too small to contain a tree. Next is screening all the rooftop mechanical equipment and including a light plan that complies with section two-point-one-three of the zoning ordinance. And finally, revising the signage pursuant to article six A of the zoning ordinance. The last item that I want to say about this is that with the reciprocal access easement agreements, they don't always have to be shown on the site plans that go before the planning commission. Oftentimes, sometimes these are administratively done between the applicants and staff through administrative site plans that don't rise to the level of planning commission review. So for example, there are a number of applications that have gone through the process where there's been those reciprocal access agreements and construction implemented that is a staff review site plan, but that doesn't necessarily have to go to the planning commission. So the planning commission doesn't necessarily need to see the design and the construction of the proposed cross-access easement agreements, just the condition that they be put there according to the ordinance. So that gives the applicant a little bit of time to work with the adjacent property owners as well as the DDA to find the ideal locations for those cross-access points. So with that, that's our recommendation and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. I'm, I'm confused about a couple of things you said, though. Number one, could you go over again that cross-access situation? Because it was my understanding that when any existing project along Ford Road came for any kind of, you know, site changes, that cross-access was going to be part of the bargaining and they'd have to lose a parking spot or two to make that happen. But I know that there's, there's been a big concerted effort to create cross-access where there is none and there's an opportunity. So I, I don't understand that, you know, why, why that's not incorporated here.
Um, sometimes they, they won't show it on a plan only because they won't know where the adjacent sites will be and sometimes it will require cooperation from the adjacent neighbors. For example, to the west of the site is Dunkin' Donuts and to the east of the site is Citizens Bank. And so what they would have to do is they would have to, they would have to work with the adjacent property owners to try to find those ideal locations to put their cross-access points. Best case scenario, they could locate them and all three owners would, would agree on the ideal spots that would, that would serve the needs of all three in the best fashion. If that can't happen, what we would look for is for the applicant, Wendy's being the applicant, to place those in the area that was agreeable to Wendy's and the township. Trying to have regard for the adjacent properties, but also try to get something that's more workable for Wendy's if they're the only ones that we're dealing with at this point, if the adjacent property owners are just not either responsive or in agreement at this time. And then finally, we would work with the DDA to try to get the standard easement language written and recorded and to try to get as much construction as we could for those easements. At the very least, I think we could probably get that on Wendy's site since they're undergoing construction at this point. But we'd want to make sure that when those are being constructed, that they've got a viable connection, either east or west to the adjacent sites. So we've tried to put the applicants in touch with the adjacent neighbors. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer because, you know, with corporate, sometimes they have to go up the chain a little bit. But we are actively working with the, the applicants and the DDA to try to get that communication going.
Okay. And then the same thing along the same lines where that existing pole sign is along with the DDA walls. M dot knows where the, the, the right of way is and that those elements are either in there right of way or they're not. Seems to me that there should be some communication between either Ken or Wendy's and M dot to say, hey, look, we, we plan on making a renovation here. Is this a safe location for, you know, for putting the, the item there? It sounds like that's not happening and I, I wonder about that as well.
Sure. I will have our Director of Municipal Services Jade Smith comment on that. And one of the things that we have been doing is we've been working with, and I just allowed Jade to speak here. One of the issues we have been working on is we have been working with M dot on some of their preliminary designs just to try to get a little bit of analysis of what those impacts will be along the corridor. I don't know if M dot has yet finalized those designs. And if they have, I don't know if they've yet approached property owners on an individual basis. So a lot of times we'll, we'll have applicants get in touch with M dot, but sometimes those final designs aren't known at the time where they submit an application and Jade might be able to speak to that in a little bit more detail.
Hi, Patrick. Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. In regards to, hi, in regards to the, the actual M dot project, we are M dot's going through the actual right of way acquisition as we speak and just starting that process. So they have a preliminary design. However, the final design will not be known until they've actually acquired all the right of way. Because if they do run into some stumbling blocks and they run into some businesses that are, that are a little bit more difficult than others and they can move a loon to the east or to the west, then they may just opt to change the design as opposed to you know, these right of way acquisitions can end up in court and we want to make, we want to make this beneficial for everybody. So with that being said, the preliminary design does show some possible right of way acquisition in this area, but we won't know the exact location until their final design is done. Yeah, you know, and with Patrick and I talking with our township attorney and then amongst ourselves and with the petitioner, you know, we will want to be business friendly. We think this is the best course of action is to allow them to keep that until the construction is actually completed.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, Patrick is a project sponsor there.
Yes, we, we've got at least one or two in the audience. So if they want to raise their hand, I can allow them to talk. But one of them that I've been working with is Stefan Hoffman. He's the architect on the project. So Stefan, you're able to talk if you want to unmute yourself.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's, it's nice to be on the side of the podium, you know, I've worked with Patrick at Lion Township Planning Commission and it's you guys seem to breeze through these. These is great. You know, I, I expected fully to be here till eleven o'clock. So this is great. Thank you. We are very amicable to all your requests and we just want to, you know, start serving burgers and, and whatever it takes, we're gonna, we're gonna do it. The cross easement access is a little tricky. You know, the bank's been kind of dragging their heels. I know Duncan's, you know, actively told Wendy's they're, they're good. But, you know, we are, we are all about that cross access agreement to help everyone to get off of Ford Road in, you know, in parking lots. So we are excited about that. And we're excited about this new image that, you know, you, you probably have seen them all over, you know, Michigan that really crisp and clean and, and we've upgraded, we're upgrading the bathrooms for ADA accessibility and so, yeah, we're, we're just, you know, this, this was my first Wendy's for the show stack company and I just wanted to go smoothly, but we're, we're a little behind now and, you know, we're just trying to get this through the finish line. So I appreciate everyone's help. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. Okay, so I'm gonna open it up to the commission. Commissioner Engel, any comments, any concerns, anything that you can?
I'm good. Look, project looks nice. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Okan?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Singh?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Commissioner Weber?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Zuber?
No, I think this will be very nice. The, the, the new look will be very nice. The, I would love it if you guys can get the cross reciprocal easements, but but I did want to comment on how many cars you're showing us on the, the site plan, because that's pretty, I, I've never seen anybody park that close together when we're in the drive-through line, but
I think, I think I read somewhere, I had a show ten cars ability. And so, yeah, they're, they're tight.
Tucked them in there real tight. Okay.
I use the average car length, I think was like thirteen point eight three feet and that's exactly what those are.
All right, Commissioner Foster?
Um, no questions. I like the new look. I think it matches the one that's on Michigan Avenue. And I'm definitely in favor of getting rid of some of the parking spots for cross access.
Commissioner Sharia?
I'm good.
And I am good also. You know, the, again, the only concern I had was the cross access and I think as long as we're working towards that, I think it's a, it's a good idea. So thank you, everybody. Do I hear any kind of emotion on this project?
I, I moved to approve the site plan for Wendy's on tax parcel number seven one dash one three, one three, three dash zero two dash zero zero seven five dash zero three six, three oh six, excuse me. Subject to the following conditions being fulfilled by the applicant. Number one, recording reciprocal cross access easements from the adjoining sites to the east and the west pursuant of the, pursuant to the zoning ordinance and eliminating any parking spaces necessary for those reciprocal ass access areas. Two, placing a tree in each landscape island unless, in the opinion of the applicant's landscape architect, the islands are too small to contain a tree. Three, including a lighting plan that complies with section two point one three of the zoning ordinance. Four, screening the rooftop mechanical equipment pursuant to section two point two six of the zoning ordinance. And five, revising the signage pursuant to article six A of the zoning ordinance, but we're flexible on when that happens.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Singh. Any further discussion? Commissioner Zuber, call or vote, please.
Sure. Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster? Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, and we put that in the hands of the trustees. Okay, so let's see, Stafford.
That'll be planning commission's approval.
I'm sorry?
That'll be a planning commission approval. So Wendy's approval is the planning commissions. That won't.
Okay, that will not go to the trustees. Okay, all right. Well, good luck, Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Smith. And we look forward to improvements on Ford Road there.
Thank you so much for everyone's help. Thank you.
All right, staff referral. Patrick, did you plan a vacation or what? We've got nothing to, to refer to you.
Playoffs are coming up, so.
Yeah, I, I did hear a little something about that this, this week. Okay, go blue. All right. Public hearing, we have one public hearing to set for January third. Do I hear a motion to set that?
So moved.
Support. All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Okan to set that public hearing for January third for Duncan. Commissioner Zuber, call the vote on that, please.
Sure, Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Okan?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
We're not done yet.
Oh, Mr. Weber?
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green. We usually go to you last, Greg.
Greg must have to catch the bachelor out or something.
No, I want to get another cup of tea. Anyways, any further discussion? Patrick, you, 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 you trying to kill us tonight? God, if we didn't have to delay that one, that one item, we'd still be going probably for another hour, I'm thinking.
Well, we wouldn't have set any records, but it could have been close.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, you asked earlier in an email today about going, keeping our meetings virtual for, at least for the time being. Is there a I, I didn't see a comment from Patrick about that. Is that something that can be considered or?
I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah.
We've, we've looked into that and one of the problems is that the Open Meetings Act provision that was added last year that allowed for virtual meetings, that, that expires on December thirty first for virtual meetings. So to have the virtual meetings, it was while the Open Meetings Act allowed it. And if the county had an order in effect that would allow a community to do it. And I've asked the township attorney if there's been any word in the legislature or in Lansing about the potential for extending that. And the last time I spoke with the attorney, she didn't indicate that, that looked like something that was imminent. Something may happen where maybe it does get extended, but I don't see it happening anytime in the near future. And if we take the Duncan public hearing for January third as an example, that public hearing notice is due later this week to the newspaper. So that will be advertised as an in-person meeting because there's no indication that virtual meetings will be allowed after December thirty first. I hope that it does, just so that communities have the choice of doing so, especially with the new variant. But that's not something that I would count on happening.
Is that something that's in the hands of the state legislature or is it the governor or who, who has, who has the control of extending it?
I believe it's the state legislature because I believe it would be an amendment to the Open Meetings Act to allow for that to continue.
Oh, okay.
I thought the governor could extend it by executive order. I mean, well, never mind. I'm not gonna go there.
I don't think she's gonna, I don't think she's gonna touch it anymore, you know, that kind of thing. I think, I think the lawsuits and everything else have kind of made her kind of look the other way.
So, so Patrick, then I'm assuming if we're gonna be in person, then we're probably gonna be required to, we wear face masks during a meeting, correct?
Yes, we, we are. Face masks are highly encouraged by building visitors. Many of the township staff, we have we have certain requirements on indoor masks. And we, I believe the, the current policy is that all visitors are we will have a Zoom component to our upcoming meetings. So for example, on January third, we want to also have a Zoom component. So let's say there's people in the audience that want to comment or even the applicants that want to present, we want to allow them Zoom access to the meeting. Now, the planning commission itself will have to meet in person, but if we can have members in the audience and applicants can meet virtually, we can try to minimize the number of people that are in the room there and still provide access, probably even allow better access because we wouldn't be getting attendance at the meetings, I don't think, if they were a hundred percent in person.
I see. Okay. All right, so we have to assume at this point that January is, it will be in person. And so will there be special provisions? You know, that, it's been a while since I've been in the boardroom, but you know, nine of us, there's not a lot of room for distancing up there on the, on the dais. Is that arrangement going to stay the same? Maybe, maybe Summer could enlighten us on how it's been going for the trustees, because I know, even though they have, have seven of them, you know, you still have to be concerned about certain things and how, how that's managed. Summer, did you?
Sure. And I just want to acknowledge that Director Smith has his hand raised if he wanted to add anything to the conversation. Then I can talk about, yeah.
Oh, I thought, I thought his hand had been raised from
Oh, was it?
Earlier, yeah.
No, I, I, I was just gonna chime in, but of course, trustee Foster, if you wanna, you wanna comment as well, but we are running hybrid meetings now for the board meetings. And the Board of Trustees, they, the quorum of the Board of Trustees is in person every two weeks. And we do allow for a hybrid model where people can come in via virtual and present their presentations or make comments, both public and anyone who has an item on the agenda. And trustee Foster, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that ever since we've gone with that model, there has been a quorum of the Board of Trustees in the building physically. And we may have had a couple that have been attending virtual, which allows for that as well.
Yes, that is true. And, you know, the board members all wear their mask. I don't think we've had very many members of the audience who have not been masked during the meetings, at least in the last couple of months. I'm glad that we have the hybrid Zoom act option. So people, people are able to still participate in the meetings without showing up because I think it increases access. And during COVID, I think we saw a number of people participating that otherwise would not have because it's too much to come to a board meeting. And so I'm glad that we still have that option available. The technology is kind of wonky at times, but we figure it out.
Yeah, we're, we're continuing to work on the technology. I, I will give trustee Foster that for sure. The one thing that I will work with Patrick on is that obviously there's only seven Board of Trustees and there's nine planning commission members. So we will work on the social distancing aspect of it. We have a couple of things that we've tried in the past and I think we can absolutely accommodate and keep people safe.
Awesome. That's good to hear. Okay, all right. Any, anybody have any further comments, concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I got one question.
Sure.
Patrick, Patrick, going back to, and I know we didn't hear the item tonight, but going back to the, the Greenland market, there was reference to the reciprocal easement agreement for Market Street that was put in place when the Rite Aid was approved. Is it possible we can see that document?
Yeah, yeah, we've got the easement agreement and the maintenance agreement. I can, I can send that along for sure.
All right, thank you.
And then the only other item I had to add for this meeting is, I was reminded I had to go back to an old email, but Commissioner Eggenberger did previously say that she would not be able to attend tonight's meeting. So she did give prior notice. I just wanted to note that.
All right. You did, and, and, and I noticed that you did send Patrick that site plan of two thousand and seven's approval of bushes on the opposite side of Cherry Hill Road way back when. And I, I remember going through that with them. So that's helpful in a, in a way. I, I, I wish that was communicated to folks who I think by the emails have a problem with the close proximity of a market to the Workman Elementary School. And there was something that the bushes, which is larger, was going to be right across the street from, from Workman. You know, and, and I don't know if, if that means anything to anybody, but I just
Well, that was my point asking for, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I, I remember the talk about the I mean, I, I remember the talk about the groceries, a grocery store, a market of some sort being included in the Cherry Hill Village Development Plan. And when I saw some of the letters that were coming in about people complaining about too intensive a use for that area and blah, blah, blah. I just thought it'd be helpful to remind people that that type of use was originally intended for that entire development down there. So.
Exactly. Yeah, for sure. Other than that, anything else from anybody? I'm sure everybody's kind of tired.
I moved to close, I moved to, to adjourn the meeting.
Merry Christmas, everybody. We've got a motion to, to adjourn and support. All in favor?
Hi. We need a roll call for that last one, if you don't mind.
Oh, come on, Patrick. All right, Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote on the adjournment, please?
Sir, Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Okan?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
No.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Take care.